Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our continuation of our fiscal year 23 budget deliberations. This is a special meeting agenda. Attending our commissioners Duncan and Philios, Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Bill Brooks is excused. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I would just like to...
I'd like to handle item two first.
Okay, so we'll go to item two first. And before we go any further, let me say this. We are going to try to hold basically any concerns or comments until the end. Unless we have any questions, Leslie or I for anyone here or any group here, and then of course we'll pose those so that we can get clarification. But as you can see from the chart, we have whittled down the deficit to, what is it? Two point two million?
Two point one.
Two point one million, so we're getting there. I don't know that we're going to be able to get to balance today because we've got a couple of more iterations. We have, I think, OpEx ahead of us. So today we'll be concentrating on the A budget. So we'll take item two first, which is the internal budget adjustment for fiscal '22 COLA. That's the cost of living increase. And who will take that for us? Brandy, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is just regarding an internal budget adjustment that we should have had done in October. It just got overlooked. It's pretty minor. This has, is not going to affect that people are being paid, people are being paid the correct amount. This is just a journal entry that we have to do and we have to use the board minutes as backup for that entry. And in the minutes, it looks like the board approved the unloaded amount of $160,000 and we need to make the adjustment for $234,000. So we just need to get on the record that the board is okay with us doing that.
That's fine.
And can you give me the amount again, please?
Yeah, you approved $160, but it should have been $234.
$234 and change?
Yeah, and change. I can give you the exact numbers later.
It's for you, so what do you want in the minutes?
Just that we can do the loaded amount for the sworn COLA FY '22.
Okay.
Oh, so the $234 is loaded?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so I can, are you ready for an action?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve the internal budget adjustment for the FY '22 COLA, which is the loaded amount.
Set.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye, and the motion is carried for a sum of $234,000 loaded. Thank you. Okay, then, do we move back up to item one?
Yes.
Now, this is our forthcoming budget, fiscal year '23 budget deliberations to include the A budget. That's personnel, with staff accountant Brandy Falcon to lead us off again.
So just to start off, as you mentioned, our deficit right now is 2.1 million. Right now, current payroll for the county is that $74 million, right here, after our most recent payroll. Our open position costs are up to $8.3 million within that. As a result of market adjustments proposed by HR in a 6% COLA countywide, and to clarify, elected officials are budgeted to get a COLA only, no market adjustment. That would be $8.1 million countywide to bring everyone up. And then the board, if you were to fund open positions that have been open longer than 60 days, cut those by 50%, you are reducing your deficit by this $2.7 million right here. So that's what's giving you that $2.1 million overall deficit.
So we've reduced it from 4.8 to 2.1?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, and then Sylvia has a couple of slides that she wants to cover before we jump into individual requests.
You want to come up here, Sylvia?
So what I'll be presenting today is fiscal year '23 preliminary wage adjustment overview. And so I first like to thank Dorothy Cross and Nancy Puff for the tremendous work they have done to get us to this point in looking at the market data and then analyzing. Nancy creates her spreadsheets for us and gives us numbers to work off of. So I'm very appreciative of their work. So the information that you're getting today, we have the wage study that was conducted this year. Those way, the wage study data is based on 2022 salaries. And I have been talking to the board and others about, for the fiscal year '23 projections, we need to age that data. So we have calculated a 6% aging factor, you can call it a COLA of some nature, to that 22, 2022 salary data. In this, the calculations that are being reviewed, we did not factor in step increases into the preliminary projection because of the costs so far of the wage study adjustments and that aging factor. And we did not calculate any salary increases for temps or seasonal staff at this time until directed by the board. Next slide, okay. So for fiscal year '23, we've done two scenarios. Scenario one factors in the projected cost of the market adjustments with a 6% aging factor with positions fully funded, open positions fully funded. And the calculation for the open positions is based on 115 open at the time we did this. We are now at 118. So all employees, general employees, attorneys, chief deputies, and the sworn officer matrix, those numbers are all factored into that scenario one and scenario two. As Brandy mentioned, we do have elected officials with a 6% COLA with no market adjustment calculation at this time. So for scenario one, the total cost of the general pay plans plus solid waste is $8,104,461. That's what's with funding open positions at 100%. If you choose to fund the open positions at 50%, if they've been open more than 60 days, that cost reduces down to $7,823,061. The differential between the two is about $276,000, $280,000 between solid waste and the general fund pay plans and so forth. We calculated the 60-day positions being opened because that's about how long it takes us to get someone onboard hired. This would not be including, the 60-day factor does not include how many days it takes on average to hire a sheriff's office employee because it takes a little bit longer with their backgrounds and so forth. So those are the numbers that we have before you in terms of our wage study analysis and the aging factor for fiscal year '23.
Okay, so let me understand something. So the difference between the two is the roughly $276,000?
Yes, for the general, and then you, general plans, and then you would add $4,900 for solid waste.
Okay.
That's the difference between the two plans, whether you fund the open positions. And these are just the market adjustment factors. That isn't the total cost of the positions. So that would be the difference of those two different scenarios.
Okay, because you mentioned, if I'm not mistaken, 8.1 mil?
Yes, the 8.1 mil is scenario number one. That's the loaded cost of the 7.6 in scenario one, plus the 490, almost the 491, $491,000 for solid waste. That's the total cost and that's what Brandy has on her worksheet, her original worksheet she did that she discussed just a few minutes ago.
And scenario one assumes full funding. That is to say that we're not cutting 50% beyond 60 days.
Right.
And that's the difference between scenario one and two?
Correct.
So what is the true difference in price?
So your true savings is, that's what I have here, would be $2.7 million?
There you go.
If you reduce the funding on those opens more than 60 days.
I think that kind of speaks for itself.
Yeah. So unless you have questions for Sylvia, we can just jump into the requests.
Go right, be right.
So most of these you guys have already reviewed?
Thank you, Sylvia.
With the departments. Do you want to start with requests for new FTEs or changes to existing positions?
I rather, sorry, I'd rather start with the service awards.
Oh, okay, yep, we'll go there first.
That will be taken care of. We won't have to deal with that anymore.
There were a couple, because I tried to get an understanding from departments, what these funds were used for. There are a couple that they didn't even know they had those funds in their budget. And I've notated that there. That is the $100 for veteran services and the $949 for the recorder's office. So it's up to you if you want to continue to fund those. They didn't even know the funds were in there. And I cannot speak to how that has happened in prior years.
Right.
And then I did, I was told by KCSO that we can go ahead and cut the 200 for OEM and the 1,000 for their admin.
Okay.
My print is awfully small here. What's the total of all the service awards?
So the total requested is $107,000, which is a $9,700 increase over prior year. So the BOCC has $500 that they use for $100 holiday bonus. HR has $7,500. That's what they use for bonuses countywide for employees if you refer someone who gets hired. These two, the $100 for VSO and 900 for the recorder, they don't know. They didn't even know that was in their budget. $1,200 for the treasurer, they just use that for annual bonuses. $2,050 for the assessor, Christmas and employee of the year bonuses. $10,500 for 911, that was new last year. The intent was to use that for sign-on bonuses. It ended up getting used over and above that amount for the $500 a month retention. Then prosecuting attorney has $18,000 for years of ser, oh, that's HR, which is under the prosecutor. Years of service awards countywide, $18,000. HR also has 300 for annual bonuses. $55,000 for jail, they use that also for the $500 a month retention. And then parks has these small 150, 300, 900 for annual bonuses. District court has 2,200 for discretionary bonuses and gift cards.
So what's our total again, Brandy?
$107,000. And you can see historically this amount does increase every year.
Right.
I guess for me, I appreciate the two cuts. And then I would say, go ahead and, I mean, it's $1,100, but if they don't know what it's for, we might as well cut those two items, the 100 and the 949. And then I would say that $10,500 and the $55,000, I would say that those could be handled out of salary savings instead of a line item. Is that not true?
I'm not sure what the logic was approving them last year, but yeah, they're up to board discretion annually, whether you approve it again or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can most of them be handled that way?
No.
You don't think so? Well, let me ask you this, an unpopular question. The, the increase that we're looking at is substantial. It's the highest ever. Why are we doing this?
So...
I understand why.
I would ask the board. I was told when I first started that these were never examined. They just rolled over year to year. And that was pretty clear to me when I talked to the departments. They just said, oh, we've always had that. So I can't keep to that.
Right, so for instance, solid waste, you should do a $50 bonus at Christmas. And then they would like to do hams or turkeys this year. So it, to me, it goes a little bit towards, hey, you're a human, you matter. So I don't mind keeping that there. And I don't mind still having those hiring bonuses for the 911 and jail, but they can come out of salary savings instead of here. But then I want to be, make sure that we don't cut all their positions 50% because you can't cut them in two places. So we either leave it here or we recognize that we're going to have to pull some of those back.
So for these two departments, you're saying don't cut their open positions that are above 60 days?
Not necessarily. I'm either saying that we either keep these line items the same and then have those at 50%, or we can take these out knowing that we're cutting them in two places. So I just don't want to...
I'd leave them in and go with the 50%.
So leave the positions funded, but leave these bonuses here?
Yeah, I guess so.
If we're cutting their open positions?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would just leave it as is then?
Yeah, I would.
But the, I mean, this says retention and discretionary. I don't know that...
Well, retention's important, right?
I was told, and I think that, I was told Andy Deek could speak to that 50,000 probably more clearly. I think in prior years, it's just been used pretty randomly.
Okay.
If they want to go for it and use it strictly for just sign-on bonuses or something, that's something you would decide.
Right. I guess if both of those were for sign-ons, then I would be okay with that.
Yeah, leave it.
Just sign-on bonuses only?
Yeah.
Okay. We need to go after some bigger fish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like I said, she said she's never been examined, so I wanted to examine it, so I feel like we've...
Right, they've never been presented.
Yeah. So, fine with that. Now we can move on to the big stuff. I think we can go...
We can go into new FTE requests or changes to existing personnel requests?
I think, I was thinking just do the new requests first.
Okay.
So, and it doesn't mean that we may not have to do something later, but I'm pretty comfortable saying that we're fine leaving building and grounds maintenance operator two. And the, I want to talk about now the three positions for community development. The long-range planner, I think there's too much going on. I don't want to fund that one. But now we need to talk about open positions. And so I, it looks like Reba can speak to some... Yeah, you can come to a table or you can come up there, either way.
Either way.
Yeah. And you got the most recent open position report?
Yes.
Okay.
I did. After reviewing the open positions, there is a job that's not currently being funded and we're not looking to hire as a permit tech. And we would like to take the admin assistant out of 2023.
Okay.
Maybe just do a transfer straight across for, from the permit tech. It would be the same step and grade. So then we could take that out as a position that we're asking for, the admin assistant for code enforcement.
Okay, so you, you want to take, which one are you keeping, the permit tech or the admin assistant?
We're going to do a conversion of the permit tech.
Oh, so the current open position of the permit tech?
Yes.
Will convert to an admin assistant?
Correct.
Okay.
Then you're doing your way with the open position for the permit tech?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's one of the three that we can take out of the budget.
Okay. And then the plans examiner, I understand that you had one open for 200 days?
Yeah.
So you're going to have to come back mid-year if you can fill all your positions?
Right.
Okay, so we'll take that one out too?
Okay.
Now, if you're going to take that one out, then should we leave in the long-range planner?
No.
You don't want to leave that in?
Nope, I don't, not this year.
How about 50%? Funded halfway through the year.
They have another planner that's been open for 93 days as well.
Yeah, I've got quite a few, got a few open posi, funded halfway?
No.
You're tough. I want to, I want to fund it halfway, so we've got to still make...
I know. So the, the issue becomes, they, we, how many positions did we give them mid-year? We gave them a bunch of positions mid-year. So if they come and they're totally full and now they can say, okay, we, the long-range planner doesn't help what's happening today.
Well, that's true.
It's the long-range planner.
Right.
So I'd rather put it off another year.
So what are we taking out? A permit tech?
No, we're taking out the admin assistant.
A senior, yeah, a, a plans examiner, the administrative assistant because we'll cover that with open permit tech, and then the planner three, long range.
That was his third choice. I mean, that was his third priority.
Let me ask you this real quick. Does David have the, he does if he reassigns, but that's going to be a problem. Does he have the resident expertise for long-range planning?
I really can't answer that. I've only been there a week and a half, so I don't want to talk on his behalf.
Okay, fair enough.
No, no, he's using consultants. And that's the issue.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
I think he was hoping that with that long-range planner, it would help with our consulting problems that we're having right now.
Right, so it's one or the other, so...
Okay, and he's got the consultants, right? Except they're doing plan review.
Yes, but they also do long-range planning stuff too.
So summarize it, just so we know where we're at?
Well, like I said, we can take out the administrative assistant.
Okay, go ahead.
We'll meet with you on that at a, at a meeting to get that conversion. And then what you guys are going to decide on the first two. Don't want to come back and go, oh, yeah, I went to the budget meeting and we're cut.
So we're taking out the long-range planner?
Okay. And then maybe come back mid-year on the senior plans?
On the plans examiner.
On the plans examiner?
Well, yeah, you got to get full.
If we get some of our positions filled?
Yeah, you, you got to get full first, and when that one of them was 200 and something days...
255 days open.
Yeah, yeah.
It's tough.
Okay, so what's our reduction there, roughly?
So the reduction is going to be $253,000.
Okay, fair enough. You okay?
I'm good, I'm good.
And she's smiling. She owes me one now.
Yeah.
She likes those big numbers, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, so, okay, so I really think that we got to do the secretary for the jury commissioner. I think that they're just super overwhelmed. And the fact that the bailiffs have been doing that, I, I think that's important.
Okay.
The next two, the clerk supervisor and the court services compliance supervisor, both of those are covered. They're offset by the liquor revenue. That's, I believe, earmarked for district court.
Yep.
Okay. The HR generalist, I am okay with. That's going to bring them up to half a person instead of a whole person per 100 employees. I'm thinking it's probably about time to unfreeze that senior maintenance operator for the jail. I think that with parts and stuff harder to get, we're going to need more people to be able to fix things at the jail.
So you want to leave that in?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And then the three internal hires for Hayden Patrol. I think what I want to find out is... It's one of these open position things that if they're funding it, we have to provide it. But if we can't hire for it, how are we going to provide it? So I think I probably need some additional information, so...
Additional information, it's, you want to know how many open positions they have? Is that what you're asking?
Um, yeah, I suppose so.
So if we go to patrol, sorry, give me a moment to find it amongst all our open positions. Okay, so in patrol, there's one, two, three, four, five, and then also the opening for the captain. So five patrol deputy openings right there. And then I think there are also two patrol deputies that are coded to other department. Yeah, two are coded to detective. So really, there's seven openings.
Okay. So then what I would say is let's fund these Hayden Patrol at 50%. And then what happens is in April, we come back and we see how they're doing overall. And then we can allocate more funds. We can make those positions whole.
And what, do you want to keep those onboarding costs in there?
Um, I, I need to talk to fleet management about some of their stuff.
Are they going to pay for these?
Yeah, they are, but not completely. They don't cover, what their stuff, it doesn't cover everything.
Sheriff, go ahead.
So...
No, she's correct. Robert Norris, she's correct. But we've, we've been upside down with Hayden for many, 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 many years and many, many, many boards and many, many, many members. Calls for service are up. Violent crime is up. Traffic collisions are up. Psychological calls for service are up. We haven't added any patrols for 12 years, is that correct? For 12 years. We cannot continue the model for law enforcement in Cooney County cannot be sustained. Tell me how we can, we have all these increases, but yet we put more stress on the men and women out there in the field.
So I'm not saying that, I'm advocating for taking the positions away. I'm saying we're funding the positions. But once again, we did this last year. We funded a bunch of positions, 50, 60%, and we were fine. We didn't have any, any issues. So I'm saying we're keeping these in because we're doing those. I would just have to look closer at some of the onboarding stuff and, you know, with the... I would just want to make sure we're not overbuying cars at this point. So that's all.
So, so what you've indicated here, Brandy, is that, is, is that 100%?
Yes.
Yes, so right now, yep, so it would be loaded wages for each one of about 80 grand. And then the onboarding costs that I was given by Stephanie for each of those is $175,000.
Okay, so if we're going, so if we're going to, okay, so for, if we're, if we're doing 50%, for budgetary purposes, you can even deal with the onboarding at 50%?
Actually, no, we'll deal with onboarding in fund balance.
Unless you want to leave that out and they're just onboarding later.
So you want to fund the onboarding? So you want to fund the onboarding costs with fund balance?
Yes. That's just gonna be the easiest way to do it. Because you can't really fund onboarding at 50% because you, you can't have a half a car.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I understand that. But for budgetary purposes, you can fund it at 50% because if it comes on halfway through the year, then you're, then you're obviously funding at 100%.
It's still a whole car.
But we can fund the, the wages at 50%.
Oh, I think they wanted motorcycle units. So.
Okay.
Um, okay, so onboarding is from fund balance and then the deputies are 50%. So I want to, I want to explain again, when we're talking about funding positions 50%, you're supposed to be actively hiring these people. And then you come back in April and you look at where you're at. And if you're getting close to or you're over your six-month period, then we address it then. But to get through the budget process, we know we're gonna have salary savings. So we're trying to balance that with open positions. So all the positions are there. None of them are frozen. But we know with people coming and going, that it's very difficult to have 100% full, 100% of the time. So all these, these three Hayden positions, I am in favor of, but at 50% just because by the time we get them onboard, um, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Okay, sure enough.
Uh, the next one is a request for an ops lieutenant assigned out at NIC, I believe. I was told NIC would pay for 100,000. So the county's still gonna have to pick up the tab on 20 grand.
Um, so my question here is, it sounds like Cooney County would be subsidizing $20,000 for the post attendees. So I don't know how many law enforcement agencies use NIC up here, but that's kind of what it sounds like to me. So is there a way that we can reconcile?
I see where you're going. And the, there's, there's two things. So when we approached the advisory board for the academy, which is made up of all the law enforcement agencies or entities, a lot of them are taking on the instructors where NIC used to pay for them. NIC then in turn said, we can give you 100,000 dollars for it to, for the position. Cause now we're not having to pay it. So they are taking on a lot of the responsibility for it. But the other thing is, is that their budget is July. And so the part that Cooney County would be responsible for, for FY23 would be about 15,000.
Okay.
So.
So I'm, as long as we're all aware of that, I'm fine with $20,000 being Cooney County's instructor contribution.
Yeah, and one of the other things is, is, is Post came to me months, a couple of months ago and said, we want to start a detention, asked me if we would start a detention academy here, which the sheriff's office then would have the majority of the attendees at that academy.
Yeah.
But we'd also get self sponsors as well that we could hopefully recruit from.
Yes.
And so that's just another tool, but I think we would see a lot of, of bigger cost savings because we could get more of our people in to this program. We'd be, uh, teaching our own folks.
Right.
And then potentially other sheriff's departments around the region have already signed in so that they'd want to assist in that as well.
And the more of our own, uh, folks we, uh, take in as students and instruct, the greater the savings from not having to send them south.
Yeah. The per diem, the per diem last year was approximately $20,000 to send it down to Boise. So.
Sold. We're good.
We're good.
Um, I do want to clarify, is the 100,000 ongoing or is it just for this year?
Right now it's ongoing. The MOU is hoping to be finished today.
Okay.
For your consideration.
Okay.
Okay.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Um, next, Solid Waste is asking for another equipment operator. They are self-funded.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then there's a position that would be split 50/50 between Solid Waste and the treasurer?
We addressed that earlier today.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Yes.
With that, okay. And then the treasurer is requesting an overtime pool of $1,200 and they're freezing their seasonal wages of, it's about 16 grand, I believe.
That's fine.
I'm also fine with that because treasurer's gonna find us over half a mil, so, although I don't think he's here, so.
He actually left. He knew we were gonna put him on the spot. But Jill's here.
Yeah.
So that takes care of all the requests for new positions.
Okay.
Um, moving down to position changes, do you want me to go through these one by one?
Um.
Do you want to, what is it, the highlighted?
I do have these, like, these pinkish colored ones.
Yeah, go ahead.
These are requests that are just purely grade and step increases. And I've been getting some direction from the board that you might want to handle those all at one time. Um, that's why I have them highlighted.
So here's kind of what I'd like to do, and I don't know the timing of it. Sorry, did you want to go first?
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay. People ask for raises for a lot of different reasons. Because we're trying to be holistic, because we're looking at 10 to 12 to, I don't know, people could be getting 20% raises. Taking these step raises and identifying them in the process when departments meet with Sylvia. There's a criteria that I want to use to say, if you are asking for a step increase for one of your employees, it's gotta be in this box. And that box, I would say, is parity. So looking at that position, much like today at the two o'clock, which I'm sorry, I meant to say this earlier. At the two o'clock meeting, the board decided that we are not going to entertain out-of-cycle budget requests unless they directly relate to hiring and specifically parity in that hiring case. So that's what we're gonna do going forward. So back to these increases, so all the pink ones that you've highlighted, I would say that we could address those at the next meeting as long as Sylvia's had a chance to meet with those specific departments and address each one of those. So I, I think it's kind of cryptic. I'm not able to really explain it. We have a couple of departments who are saying, okay, we want these people to go to these steps. Well, we already know that we cannot afford steps countywide, so we have to make sure that the reason for these steps is internal alignment or parity issues. Okay? So there's ones that are, that are caused by, we have to be careful with FSLA and, and those, those kinds of, um, laws that we have to abide by. So my suggestion would be Sylvia meets, she's gonna meet with all the departments anyway. And in that session, she will say, okay, um, Keith, you're in here. Um, so I'm just gonna pick on you, Keith, because you're a good sport. Um, and actually Keith, um, looked at our deficit and he actually cut back some of his asks. So I appreciate that. So one of his asks is for one of these situations. So when Keith meets with Sylvia, he, she's gonna show him where all the probation officers and all the people in the department are going. Then they're gonna look at that specific request and say, yes, that meets our criteria. That is an internal alignment issue or it is a parity issue and we're gonna be able to address it then. So I, I've got a couple of departments here who have, I don't know, six to eight people who they're looking at. And I'm thinking that they're probably not all gonna qualify for this. And so what Sylvia will do, well, what I hope the department will do is say, okay, I recognize the board direction and I'm gonna pull my request. And then if not, um, or if Sylvia says, no, this really is an issue. We have to deal with this now, then we can come back as a board and review all those individually instead of trying to look at pink blobs and try to make decisions based on that. So.
So that, hold on a second, Keith. So that, okay, that addresses the issue of parity. What about compression? That's in there too?
Well, okay, so if you're talking about, there are certain compressions that, that no, we're not going to address.
Okay.
Because unless it falls into a parity issue or an internal alignment issue where you're gonna get FSLA involved, that's where I want to draw the line. So we either want to balance the budget or we want to have a bunch of these one-offs. So, and because everybody is meeting with Sylvia, all the department has a meeting with her. Um, countywide, I'm not talking about BOCC departments. I'm talking about countywide departments. She's gonna be able to drill down on these individual requests instead of the board arbitrarily saying, we're not gonna fund that, we're gonna fund that. So based on that criteria. And I mean by Sylvia, I mean her compensation department, not just her herself. Yes. So is that clear, Asmaud?
Yeah, so basically when we're talking about parity, what we're, what we're talking about is situations where people in different departments are essentially doing the same job, but are being compensated and/or graded differently. What we want to do is be able to take care of that so that we're not necessarily legally exposed. When you get into compression, that's a little bit of a different issue because there are situations inside and outside of government where individual contributors at times earn more money than their supervisors. Um, I certainly witnessed this often in the tech field because you had engineers who were highly degreed and in some cases earning more than their managers. A little bit different in government, but compression does not necessarily expose us as much as parity would. And I think that's the primary concern.
And if compression crosses over into parity, that's when it's going to be addressed. So it's, I think that's all we need to say.
We're good.
I mean.
Sylvia, you okay? Go ahead, come.
Um, yes, I think what we can do is meet with all the departments, which we intend to, to show them the market data and saying, okay, this is what the market said about your position. This is the proposal, um, of where we would move them. Pretty much what I can say now is that all, all our grade level pay shifted up. Okay? So the pay of a grade two becomes the pay of a grade three. And a lot of that took care of the market issues that we had. Um, and then what we'd had to do, I think there's about 28, that by doing that shifting of the ranges, we still had to move them to a new grade. But in our analysis, um, we, we feel like the internal alignment is appropriate. So if we didn't have market data for positions, the way the positions are internally aligned, we felt, it was relevant, the market data that we had. So they moved with that whole grouping of staff. Probably doesn't make a lot of sense. That's why we need to meet with each of the electeds and the departments individually to walk through it.
But I think I can also name two internal alignments that are happening on a, a local level. Like we have, let's say we've got five of these positions countywide. And then you've got one position who happens to be FSLA. Well, I know two, two that I'm talking about. Um, so that person themselves, even though their position is internally aligned, that person is not internally aligned. So that's, we are looking at that as well. So I know Keith, I think you've got one and I know another department has one. So that's what Sylvia will be looking at and saying, okay, yes, this fits into the criteria. And it all comes back to us. So.
The board will make the decision.
Yeah, Sylvia doesn't. Sylvia just helps us, give us guidance that yes, this fits into this criteria, this param. So it makes sense.
So when you say pay study, are you referencing this document that we received 30 to 60 days ago?
Yes, and so what we've done is we've taken that data and we took our whole, um, pay grades and now we're putting what it currently looks like, um, what your market difference is, whether you're at market, below market. And then with an adjustment, where you fall within market. So we need to get those meetings started with all of you next week.
So add one more to your list of vacancies. We had another dispatcher resign today. Commissioners, this pay study, this is not a Pacific Northwest pay study. I had a well-respected businessman come in here and tell you that you have to look at your local market. Don't waste our time on this pay study. Do not waste our time on this pay study.
Have you seen what the echos are going to?
No, I haven't.
Okay, then, then why don't we do that first and then we can address it there?
Because there just seems to be a lack of interest to provide public safety with.
Okay, well, I'm gonna cut you off right there. We're done. We're done.
No, we're not done.
This is for the board. We are done.
No, we're not done.
We are.
No, we're not done.
We are done.
So this goes on month after month after month. We're not done. This goes on month after month after month. Public safety needs to be addressed. We had some significant events over this past weekend.
Yes, we're very well aware of those and this is not going to help. We're, this is not helpful. Okay, we have a process here. We're going through the process. So I appreciate your passion for your people. We also share that, but the way we're going about is different things. You have no idea what the.
Needle on this.
As soon as you allow us to. So, thank you.
These are the most substantial increases we've, okay, let me share something with you that doesn't necessarily address the problem, but it's something that, that was highlighted for me today. In the five years that I've been here, this is my sixth budget. In the five, and some of the people listening in aren't gonna appreciate this, but it's a fact. The average tax increase that we took was one and a half percent. We could take three. Had we taken three over the last five years, we would have added four million bucks. In addition to that, and this is something novel and I don't know if this is even doable, but when we collect fees for overdue taxes, penalties and interest, typically when we get those fees, we distribute them among all the taxing entities. Potentially, we might have been able to keep those. Now, I don't know if that's legal and I don't want to put the burden on Barry here. But what is interesting is had we kept those fees for the county, instead of distributing them necessarily to the other taxing entities, we would have added about another four mil. So we would have added over the last five years approximately $8 million. If you assume that the average employment over that period was 800, excuse me, 800 employees, every employee in the county today would be making $10,000 more. But because we ran budgets frugally and didn't want to take the full three among, you know, the penalties and interests that I described, this is where we're at. So the reason I bring that up is we're in a catch-up mode right now. And so going ahead with what potentially is an $8 million increase is huge. And that's what we're trying to do.
And I recognize it being huge, but it's only huge because there was such a deficiency for a long period of time.
Fair enough.
So.
But there's only so much we can do. And that's what we're trying to do.
Commissioners, may I address two of the subjects we've previously spoken of? One specifically, maybe Keith, Keith can speak to it, is the vehicles for our three Hayden deputies because of the supply and demand issue. Can we discuss that about purchasing those now if we have the opportunity?
Did you want to address that, Keith, or you want to meet with him offline?
Uh, yeah, I, I haven't talked to him or anything like that about that. I'd be glad to help out any way I possible with the agreement or whatever.
Okay. So that's the, that's the piece I'm missing. I'm missing the overall, how many are, you know, 25 were approved? And so I'd kind of like to see a little bit more detail there, but.
Were those three not part of the 25?
No.
No.
You were not?
Those are additions specifically for Hayden, but in doing so, we need the three vehicles to accommodate those bodies servicing Hayden area. And obviously if we don't jump on them sooner than later, we're 18 to 24 minutes behind for, because of the supply and demand issue.
Okay, so if we're funding the positions at 50%, but we have an opportunity to pick up the vehicles now, fund balance?
Yes, that's, yes, I ask them to be moved to fund balance.
Are you okay with it then?
Mm-hmm.
Quick question. Again, it kind of goes back to, um, when they brought 30 vehicles ahead, you know, to, this would cover the 30 vehicles if it was still available. Cause you did the 25 plus the two for the jail and if the three, uh, three vehicles were still available.
Parks and water waste.
Vehicles that was brought to you forward a couple about, about a month ago.
Parks took one.
Yeah.
Parks took one.
How many total?
Oh, Parks took one.
So you'll have to go.
So you'd have two vehicles still possibly. I don't know if that's still there or not.
Yeah.
To be ordered.
Okay, so you're gonna check that out?
Captain Smart usually runs that end of it and I'll, I'll work with Captain Smart and the under sheriff.
Commissioners, I can say Mike Whiteboard is still holding up and they're, they said that they would allow us three to five more in that batch if we took advantage of that here soon.
Okay.
I suggest that you do because there will be a 10% increase of, well, what, $4,000 apiece. So you're looking at $12,000 more if you don't take advantage of it now.
Yeah. That's fine.
Three?
Yeah. From fund balance.
Three from fund balance.
So again, and that's out of current year fund balance versus, and then pull it off of FY23's budget.
Um, you're gonna argue with me. Yes, Keith, your way.
That Keith is arguing with me. That Keith is arguing with me.
Sorry, that Keith.
Commissioners, can I just confirm that you're allowing us to get 30 through Mike Whiteboard? 25 from the initial, two deputies, and now three for Hayden.
I guess so.
That is correct.
Didn't Parks take one?
Parks took one, but he's, Captain Smart is saying that they would increase that 30 to 31 or two. So. Yep, just let us know.
So the total is actually 31?
Well, it'd be 30 for the sheriffs, and Park has the one. So just as long as Captain Smart was clear on that, so he can make sure he knew about that one. So he understood it.
The other issue, if we may speak to it, is the bonuses.
Mm-hmm.
I know you specifically set them aside for hiring, but there's no consideration in regards for retention?
No, because of the wage study. So you gotta meet with Sylvia first, look at the wage study.
And then we'll go from there.
Yes, the retention bonuses that were initiated in this fiscal year were for the wage study. So they got mid-year increases, now they're gonna get another increase in October. So that's two in six months. All right.
Can I ask a quick question? Because she, I was an example. When I meet with Sylvia, the two pink spots that we have up there, does Sylvia bring that forward, or do I bring that forward? Or is that, how do we bring that forward depends on?
It'll all be brought forward at once.
By Sylvia, HR.
Yeah, and I think.
So I make sure I was clear on that communication that we weren't doing it twice.
Yeah, we're obviously off track and not gonna get through this document, so we're gonna have to address it at the OpEx meeting. So the operations meeting, yeah.
So, and yeah, once the departments meet with Sylvia, if they need to make changes to their requests, they need to call me.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on.
Okay, so, yeah, Keith had two requests to give two of his people an additional, like, hourly stipend to compensate for their training duties, and I guess they're in charge when he is gone.
I am fine with that. It's a succession issue, and the total is $5,000.
That's fine.
And then, same thing, AMP wants to increase their overtime pool to 5,000 to match their FY '21 amount. This year it was 2,500.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay, and then we already said yes to building grounds. The assessor, is it requesting more overtime? They were budgeted at $1,000. So far this year, they've spent $26,000.
Can we do an analysis, we can bring this back with the pink items, analysis on salary savings covering that overtime?
Yeah. And then, let's see, BOCC has a request for internal alignment. And then, yes, that would be the next one on the agenda.
Yeah, oh, actually, that one should be pink.
Yeah, we're going down to the pink.
You want that one to also be a meet with Sylvia one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, my Excel is frozen, so I'll just have to wait. Okay, and then, oh, sorry. Next, this is a multi-position request, again, from community development. They want to reclass all their plans examiners. They want to convert them to, they want to reclass them all to grade 10, steps four and five. They were gonna reclass them to a building inspector three. So they want to change their position names, descriptions, and their graded step.
Sylvia? You might as well just stay, it might be easier.
Yeah.
We are currently, oops, sorry. We are currently looking at any of the reclassifications. So for the plans examiners, I know they wanted to create a career path, but we weren't sure if it would quite make it to three levels.
Okay, so that one needs to be pink too?
Okay.
Is that, well, because I'm, I guess what I'm doing too is because we have some hay method ones that we're waiting, so we need to.
And that's gonna be addressed?
We're waiting for Hay to give us their analysis.
Yeah.
Then Community Development is requesting to convert their permit tech to a senior permit tech, and then a plans examiner to a senior plans examiner. Kind of along that same line.
Right, so Sylvia, with these kinds of things, is this strictly a board thing or is this something that HR looks into too to make sure that it's, we have a job description to go with it and everything?
Yes, and we want to make sure that the proposed grade is, aligns with our job evaluation methodology. So we'll need to look at those as well. And I don't know if we have those in the queue, but we will check.
Okay. Typically, so this is more of a process question because it seems like we don't have enough information to make a decision. So typically, when somebody wants to do reclass, aren't they supposed to get with you and then?
And some have.
Okay.
So we just need to go and revisit who has and who still needs to and give them that information. And so then we can evaluate it and give you an appropriate grade.
Do I need to turn all these pink?
I asked at one point.
If you're looking at grade changes as a result of the study, didn't we decide that we were not also gonna be looking at reclass? Is that not actually, to some degree, being addressed by the grade change?
No.
Yes and no?
No. There, the wage study is addressing their pay at where they're at today.
Okay.
Where they're graded today, not where, if they've got some significant changes in job duties based on Policy 600, then we would put it through the job evaluation process and come back to the board with a recommendation for the board to approve.
Okay, so these need to go pink?
The community development ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, District Court, they're requesting to increase their overtime pool from 10,000 to 20, or to 30.
So I'm wondering, they're gonna get, isn't that, oh, Carleen, you're on the phone, right?
Yes, I am.
So Carleen, if we're approving the secretary for the bailiffs, and if we're approv, if you got that deputy TCA, is, do we really need this much money in overtime?
Yes, we do. And the main reason is, you know, right now, you know, the bailiff's office, they typically mail out about 50,000 questionnaires a year, and that's just enough to get jurors for all the jury trials. And so, you know, they need that office help. But we, because we're so busy in the courtrooms, we just don't have any, we don't have anybody to help, you know, that portion of the business, the jury commission portion. The overtime for the bailiff has to deal with, you know, them being bailiffs and security for the courthouse and for the courtrooms. You know, we were trying to catch up on jury trials. We just started civil jury trials. We're trying to average six to eight jury trials a week. It just takes a lot of manpower, and, you know, the court calls are going later. Again, trying to catch up, there's just more cases coming in, the first appearances, and arraignments, and pre-laws. So I would say the majority of that money is for bailiff being bailiff and security. The, yes, the secretary absolutely will be perfect and help out with the jury commissioner responsibilities because then the bailiffs can do their job. But it's still gonna be a lot recovering from COVID. And the numbers are going up again, and God forbid we get into that same situation again. We're gonna have to start going out to the fairgrounds and eagles and picking the juries, and then, you know, that requires.
Okay, 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 no more. Okay, I'm done with doom and gloom, Carleen. I don't want to hear doom and gloom. You got it.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for your, I didn't mean to.
Don't worry.
It's just late in the afternoon. Thank you, you answered my questions, Carleen, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got, we've got a couple minutes left.
Yeah.
How do you want to handle the rest of this? We've got, we still have a bunch.
All right, well, let me, let me pick out, let me pick out a few then.
Roughly, what have we, what have we decremented the overage by just today?
So today, we cut 253,000 from community development. And if we're gonna fund these Hayden ones at 50%, that's gonna be 120 grand. And then we're gonna send the onboarding of 526,000 to fund balance. So 520 plus 120 is.
640?
640 plus 250.
890?
Yeah.
So almost 900,000.
Progress, yeah. And we still have a, we didn't even get halfway through the requests for existing positions.
Well, okay, you know what, let's handle an easy one.
Go ahead.
These are all, all but one are cuts, and it's the CRO to records hybrid positions.
Yeah.
So those are all cuts except for one, and so I am fine with that.
All those.
Approving all of those.
Okay, perfect.
Now, which ones were those again?
Okay, so page two.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so it's from this amount here, that 2,000 all the way down.
All the way down, okay, fine. Go ahead.
We would just need updated job descriptions to make sure they align however it aligns. I'm sure it'll look right to four, but we'll need updated job descriptions. And I know Kyle had been working on some sort of conversion.
Okay, so I guess that's pink.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
It's all right, we're getting there. On call pay, you want to address that?
Yeah, prosecutor and detective both are requesting the same amounts as last year for their on-call pay.
So, so once again, I'm okay with the exempt employees, the on-call pay for the prosecutor. I'm still not happy about on-call pay for people who get overtime and hourly when they're, when they're out there. So I just think that.
Exempt only?
Yes, exempt only. The one thing that I think we might be able to get some savings is how much RBS money will go towards the seasonal temp pool increase. So I don't see an RBS person.
So if this is all grant-funded, it's split between these two org sets. So potentially 31,000. Wait, am I looking, no, sorry, that's Parks.
We're in the wrong, yeah, we're in the wrong one. I'm sorry, I skipped around, I went up to the top.
These rec safety stipends?
Yeah, so I don't want to talk about, I don't want to talk about that pay yet. I don't want to talk about special duty pay for that yet. I just want to address the 87,000.
Oh, yes, that was a Dan Maddos thing that was done right when I started. But I would hope somebody could speak to it. How much of that is covered by the grant, is what you're asking?
Yeah, the recreational voter safety grant. Yes.
It'd be 50/50, 50% comes from RBS and 50% from the on-call pay for detectives. So it should be all dedicated.
Oh, so it's 100% dedicated funds for the 80, that whole 87,000?
If it's for seasonal temporary employees for a green program, it's all paid overtime.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, then, then I say we approve both of those and take them out of the grant.
The 87,000?
Yes.
Yes, because we gotta go up to $20 an hour, and then it's $25 for law enforcement.
And to clarify, the way Dan had this structured was the 25 is only gonna apply to retired officers.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Commissioner, may we speak to the, if I heard you correctly, you want to do away with the on-call pay for our detectives?
Yes.
And for what reason?
Because I've never supported it in three and a half years.
They're salaried employees.
So when they get called out, they're getting paid for being out there. When Barry's deputy prosecutors are getting called out, they don't get paid.
But the understanding of the field work of being subject to call on a designated period of time, like any other law enforcement agency, you have a designated investigators for the time, whether it be at night or on the weekend.
So you would rather us pay them at overtime rate instead of a on-call rate?
No, they wouldn't get extra money for being on-call because that's in their job description. And I have it at about 10 departments countywide that fit into that exact same thing. They're on-call and they're hourly. So every time they get called out, they get their pay because, you know, and their overtime pay, if it's, it will be above what they've made in their 40 hours or whatever they've worked that.
But understanding the fact that that on-call pay guarantees those assigned people are free and subject to call for the weekend, if they're not on-call, then it's, we don't have that guarantee or setting aside.
So I have this argument for how many times, how many years now? So is a detective required to be a detective? Do you say you are now gonna be a detective?
Meaning they're selected?
Correct.
Yes.
I mean, they, they apply for it, they're not just selected. They apply for it.
Correct, they apply, test for a position.
So they understand that they're going to be on-call, they understand what that means, and they're gonna get $3.50 an hour additional pay for that title.
It's the 225.
225, okay. So it's a philosophy thing, and for three years, I've gotten outvoted. So I'm gonna bring it up every single year that I'm here. I don't think hourly employees should get on-call pay because I have to do it for 10 departments countywide who are in the same position. But they get paid when they go out. Exempt employees do not get paid when they go out.
What type of conditions do other departments put on their employees that are on-call?
That they have to respond within a certain amount of time.
And that's it?
I don't know, I mean, I imagine they can't drink, I mean, there's a bunch of different ones in the team.
Because we put a series of condition on our employees, as do other public safety agencies here in the Pacific Northwest. And if we do a pay study to try to be comparable to the other agencies in the Pacific Northwest, then we should follow it not only in the pay study, but also in some of the other duty assignment requirements. And we require them to be within X amount of miles, we require them not to drink alcohol, we require them to be available, we set a set of conditions on these people.
So you know what, let's defer this to next week.
Well, next, next session.
Next session.
I don't know when it's gonna be, but next session.
So you want to pick back up on personnel next meeting?
Well, the OpEx meeting, yeah.
And I'll have the agenda changed to the both.
Okay, so these, the remainder in pink here, is that gonna be taken up with Sylvia, is that it?
Yes, yep.
That's gonna be, yeah, responsibility of electeds and department heads to be scheduling with Sylvia, and then they need to be communicating with me any changes made.
Okay, so how much is left for us then from a personnel standpoint?
There's, there's still quite a bit.
A pretty significant amount.
Yeah, it's fine.
I think we maybe, maybe got almost halfway done today.
Where's the other half?
We didn't address any of the pink shaded ones because Sylvia needs to.
Oh, okay, okay.
We don't have enough information right now.
And then there's still a chunk down on the bottom that we haven't got to.
So what is it, so that everybody, so we're all on the same page. So what is it we expect to happen? Sylvia, you're gonna meet with the EOs and our department heads?
Yes, we're gonna review the wage study information, where their staff are currently in comparison to the wage study from 2022.
Go ahead.
And then with the proposal of where they would be to market 2023. And then with these positions, we either need to work through the reclassification process or look at it from a parity issue of whether they're, you're not gonna have a 14-year, 15-year employee on a step 14. That's, we're just, we're gonna look at it, you know, is there some separation potentially from someone who's, if they were hired year one today and they're making the same as someone who's been here six years? We would try and look at that and see if we can reconcile it. But that, that'll be the additional money that they've allocated. It's not in the wage study dollars. So that's, we're gonna need some time, though, to get through all this.
Right, so I'm figuring whatever's available, we'll deal with at CapEx, and then the first budget deliberation after CapEx is when we'll deal with the rest of it, so.
So essentially, I'll give it to you in a second, Ronnie. So essentially, Sylvia, what's gonna happen is you're gonna be, I don't want to put you on the spot, but essentially making recommendations on these so that we have something to go with when we reconvene on this specific.
Yes, and we'd be getting the rationale from the department head or the elected official and sharing information and coming hopefully to a consensus together. If there isn't, that's the board's discretion to rule on that.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna move to public comment.
No, she said you were gonna get to me.
Yeah, go ahead, well, I was gonna get to you under public comment anyway, go ahead.
Well, it's not a public comment, it's just a question. So, and I don't understand that the.
So, am I to understand that the rest of these are going to be discussed after the capital request? Or are we having a personnel portion next budget meeting? Because we had a department reorganization we wanted to talk about, and I want to know when I need to get everybody else back here to talk about it.
So is it in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, on our personnel staff, right?
Yes, so everything that was not handled today is going to be handled at the operation budget deliberation.
Which is next week.
Correct.
Okay, so we're not waiting until after the capital. Okay, I want to make sure that I know what-
Well, depending on how far we get next year.
Yes, yes, we'll have, we may have to push it off another, I don't know that we're going to get all this information in one week, so, yes.
Yeah, I was hoping for clarification on the bonuses. You had stated that the fifty thousand roughly was only for hiring incentives, not for retention.
Correct.
And you said that was based on the wage study adjustments that are happening. Isn't the entire county getting wage adjustments done? You're adjusting all positions, but yet there's bonuses being offered to other departments?
No.
No.
They're not?
No.
I heard three of them at the start of this discussion.
Nothing for hiring bonuses, no, nothing for retention bonuses either.
Holidays.
Yeah, so fifty dollars a person, a turkey or a ham.
Okay, is that going to all departments or is it just to one?
That's what one department does. Another department gives, oh, blankets, they've done blankets in the past. Another department has done, I don't know what.
But it's funded by the tax dollars to do that.
Yes, yes, so do-
Is that something that we offer countywide, or can we? Because we have the same civilian staff and sworn staff that work just as hard as anybody else in this county.
Yeah, if that, I have not, so you guys have done that in the past. I've seen that you guys have purchased cards and stuff. Is this the line item that you purchase the cards out of?
That I don't know. I've heard Christmas bonuses, and all these things would be nice for everybody. I'm just speaking on behalf of our civilian staff that doesn't see that ever, so.
Right.
I don't think we're making any changes with regard to the holiday.
No.
The fifty-five thousand is being used-
I got one other question too.
It was used for both. Okay, so Brandy's saying that it was used for both. I know you guys have purchased in the past gift cards, and so if that's the same line item, then that will remain the same.
Great, one other question. With the reduction of some of the positions, funding them at fifty percent or less and freezing other positions as well, some of those were counted on for salary savings to pay for, to offset some of the overtime costs. I'm speaking specifically to the jail. I know their overtime expenditures are tremendous, and you do budget a lot for it, but a lot of that, and even the temp seasonal pool is paid out of that salary savings. So if you're cutting those positions and not funding them or funding them at fifty percent, is there going to be an adjustment to the overtime?
I asked every department multiple times if they want to increase their overtime, and I was not. I was told to keep KCSO the same, so that's a discussion.
And that was prior to this discussion today, though, so I think that needs to be factored back into the discussion for overtime.
We did it the exact same way last year, and you guys are okay.
Yeah, okay.
We're not going to let you drown. We're doing everything we can.
I'm just asking for clarification.
I know, but we did the exact same thing last year. So, yeah, but this is why you have to keep an eye on it, and especially this is why I want to hear from people mid-year. You know, I want to hear from people in April saying, okay, we've got these positions filled. But see, it's one of those things, you fill the positions, your overtime goes down. So it's, it's one of those things, so.
Is that it? Public comment? Hearing none. Four thirteen, meeting adjourned. Thanks.